Yeah.
I mean, you've got time, too.
Oh, I will.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, like this, yeah.
Yeah, we have to.
That's good. I'm almost, that's my call. Yeah. Good.
Yeah.
And now it's beautiful out.
I don't know if they're gonna do it?
It feels like March.
At the end.
I took a walk yesterday in the morning. Sun setting up.
I know.
Yes, I think we're ready to start.
Crazy.
It feels a little weird.
Yeah.
The hell machine is gonna just slap us back and say that.
Definitely, we'll pay for it later.
Oh, yeah. What was crazy in Chicago on Friday went from minus ten up to zero.
Right. That's gotta feel like, you know, T-shirt weather at that point.
Not really. We were just, we were down in Hyde Park, and so just hanging out.
Yeah.
I did get to the produce market, which is... Anyway, I'm gonna call us to order. It is the Planning Commission meeting for January ten. Asking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? I believe it was a unanimous voice vote. Okay, communications from the audience for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to new business. Text amendment. Oh, for planned unit development. Section thirty-nine point two. And this is a, will require a public hearing. So, I wonder if we should start with staff report?
Sure.
On what we're, what we're about to do.
So I think the way we've done, this is, this is our Udo round seven, I guess we're calling it. So we did break out in the agenda a couple of the items that we thought were a little bit more substantial in terms of the amendments, and then the rest of them, just sort of the corrections, clarifications. So I think the way we've been doing this is we just run through the list, and then you guys have voted separately on those. But if that's not how you want to do it this time, we could certainly do it different.
That's...
Okay.
Whatever's most expeditious.
Sure. So, as you mentioned, this first amendment is in regards to the PUD section of the Udo. And you can see what we have here is really striking out that paragraph F and adding a new paragraph F. That's much, much bigger. So really, what we're trying to do here is for a PUD, really, the whole point of the PUD is to provide some flexibility to the Planning Commission to approve something that maybe doesn't meet the current code requirements. And rather than identify specific sections in the code that you could do waivers to, like we have in other parts of Udo, we wanted to really provide this, this blank slate to allow the Planning Commission to consider any exceptions or waivers. And so what we've developed here is a series of standards. They're A through F that would give you some criteria to use to help evaluate making changes as part of a, an overall project. Those standards, A through F, are really items, if they look a little familiar, they're really items that you have used with other projects. So when you have done that, that write-up for the PUD, and you talk about, you know, how it, how you feel like it meets, warrants this approval of a PUD, these are the items that we really pulled right out of those other PUDs that you guys have done. So that's where those, where those standards come from. And then you can see at the end there, we simply are indicating that applicants would provide evidence that they're meeting those based on a number of different items, you know, site plans, reports, et cetera. So that is what we would like to put into the PUD section to allow you to, to grant waivers for any project if you felt it met those. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
This next one is the ADU, accessory dwelling unit amendments. We've talked about this a couple times. These are really the amendments that were triggered from the Neighborhood Improvement Committee recommendation. And so the table that you see here is really what is new. And then we tried to highlight a couple where those changes are. So we came up with this table. Tier one is essentially what we have now, with the exception of those highlighted areas where we are lowering the minimum from three hundred to two hundred square feet. Increasing the number of people from two to three. And then changing, really, instead of having the fraction of the maximum not to exceed gross square foot, footage area from the principal dwelling unit of a third, changing it to a fraction and go, or changing it to a percent, to thirty-five percent. So really, the only reason why it's not thirty-three and it's thirty-five is just we thought thirty-five would be easier to deal with. So those are really the changes from what we have right now. And then tier two is really the additional area. And what, what we came up with was for lots that are larger, ninety-six hundred square feet or more, and at least sixty feet wide, those are the requirements of really the duplex requirements in our TNR zoning district. That's where those numbers come from. So if you meet those requirements, you would be able to have an accessory dwelling unit go from seven hundred and twenty square feet to eight hundred square feet, so an increase of eighty square feet. Have an additional person, have a maximum of four. And then the not to exceed number goes to fifty percent from the principal dwelling unit. The rest of the changes that you see all in red there are really just some reorganization of existing requirements. You see them carried through on that second page on the right-hand side. The ADU can't be sold separately. And that, we wanted to make it clear that that parking space was also required. You know, it's in the tables, but, you know, we thought when you're putting all of this together, let's make it really clear so that is there as well. Questions on that one? So the GMU zoning district, so highlighted here on that right-hand side with that arrow is the GMU zoning district. Basically, Sixteenth Street to Twenty-Fourth Street, east of Waverly in that blue color. Right now, that zoning district is limited to thirty-five feet height limit. You take a look around the zoning district, you can see that orange zoning is the HDR. That is a forty-five-foot height limit. The red is the CMU, that's a fifty-foot height limit. The industrial in the gray to the south is sixty, with actually allowance to go to a hundred feet with a special use permit. And then you can see a couple little purple areas carved out of that GMU. Those are PUD zoning districts that allow for up to six stories. Actually, they would even allow for it to be higher than that. So those are the zoning district height limits that are around there. The reason why we wanted to take a look at this is a lot of this property is wetland out there. And so to get any kind of significant project in there, we really think people are going to have to go up rather than out. And given the surrounding height limitations around it, we are recommending changing that height limit to forty-five feet with the allowance to go to sixty feet with the special use permit. I highlighted a couple of these, those PUDs. This is the building that we permitted at the Rest Haven project, which is that PUD in that southeast corner of that GMU area. We permitted this building at about fifty-eight feet. And you can, it's hard to tell on that right-hand side, to the peak, it's about seventy feet tall. So this is a three-story building with about twelve-foot floors and a large peaked roof. So really enabled, in order to do that, you know, you need to have some height, which is what we've done with this project. This is the Home Flats project. This is the one at the corner of Waverly and Twenty-Fourth. This is a four-story building, obviously, flat roof. But we permitted this at about fifty-two feet tall. So again, the idea was raising the height limit in the GMU district to allow for some buildings, like we've already approved in these PUDs, that would be allowed by right. Or by the special use. This is a portion of the zoning map, or the zoning map that shows the airport highlighted area. And circled there in red are the, those yellow properties. Are properties that have recently come into the city through the annexation process. When they do that, our ordinance is pretty clear that what the zoning, how we bring it into the city for zoning purposes, that's why it's yellow in the LDR district. But there isn't anything in there that talked about the airport overlay. So we wanna make sure that those, those black lines there get extended onto those properties. So really, this amendment is just extending that airport overlay, which essentially is already there even when it was in the township, right? But we wanna make sure that it's in our code that extends onto those properties that are now in the city. So this would update a couple of our maps in Udo. This is a portion of one of the use tables in the Form-Based Code District. You can see, we just omitted those red references into four-point-oh-three. So all of those special land uses that don't have specific design requirements that directs you to four-point-oh-three, and we just simply omitted those five areas need to be carried through on that table. Staying in the Form-Based Code, we talk about, we use vehicle doors when we're really talking about garage door entrances. And so after using it for a little while, I think we agreed that garage door might be more clear, a better way to describe that than vehicle door. Vehicle door sounded like you might be talking about a car door. So we wanted to change that. So there's a couple pages, I think four separate pages, where we simply wanna update that to garage door. One-story building height, this is also in the Form-Based Code. So really providing some clarification to this, that the one-story building height for new buildings would be limited, would be required to be at least sixteen feet in height. We do provide some updated language. You can see we're kind of striking out, but then we're adding back to it just some different language for how you, how you determine height, how you measure height. And then at the end, trying to make it clear that if you don't meet that, you simply get referred to the non-conforming section of the document. So then the next update is to the non-conforming section. So we do, we do allow for non-conforming buildings to be expanded. What this is telling you is that, what the change is, is the expansion or modification can't result in a greater non-conformity for maximum setback or minimum height. So if you don't meet that minimum height requirement, you could continue what you have. Same thing with the maximum setback. What we don't have in there is minimum setback. So if you were closer than that minimum setback, if the setback was, was twenty feet and you were at ten feet, you couldn't continue that same line. We would want any addition to meet the required code. So it was, it's simply providing some flexibility in situations where we're talking about the maximum setback or the minimum height. This would, this would have come up during the, the discussion with the, with the Dollar General. They wouldn't have had to go get a variance for that, for maintaining the same building height line. They wouldn't have had to get a waiver to, for that maximum setback requirement.
Window issues still would've come up, no doubt.
Right. Window issues still would've come up. And then we're just eliminating that paragraph three. We thought with those other changes, we didn't think that was necessary.
Nate asked a question on that, then. So knowing that we're kind of prescribing like the maximum setback or minimum height as kind of the benchmarks, isn't that kind of just the inverse of what we're talking about? For like, you're still continuing a, maybe a non-conforming issue? Which one's the more problematic, though? Because in the Dollar General, for instance, we, the desire is to actually have the building closer to the road. So are we shooting ourselves in the foot or creating an additional issue there by not at least defining any of that? Does that make, does that make sense?
You, you lost me at one point. I thought, I thought, I thought it was following, but then I...
Yeah, so like, if we're saying that it's okay in one way to continue a non-conforming issue, conforming use, right? If it's set, if it's above the maximum setback, for instance, you know, that's going to be allowable. But in the, like, in the, in the scenario where we want them to actually be closer to the road, or where, like, the, the code is dictating that it needs to be closer to the road, are we perpetuating an issue there where really we're kind of hurting the, the kind of the development long-term if we're not at least addressing that in some way?
Yeah, I, I get you now. I understand what, I understand what you're talking about there. And the Dollar General, I think, is a great example of this because the, the expansion was to the side. And so the setback on the, the front of the building remained exactly the same distance as it did. And if, without, without this kind of an exception in the language, we'd say, well, yeah, you can put an addition on, but the addition's gotta be to the front of the building so that you're reducing the amount of the non-conformity that you have. So the, yeah, that question is, we're not, we've already decided we don't want them to be able to increase that non-conformity. The question is, do we want them to be able to continue at the same level of the non-conformity? And I can't think of any right off the top of my head, but maybe, maybe staff can, of a situation where that actually kind of defeats the purpose of, or prevents somebody from doing any kind of maintenance at all with it. You know, I was just, I was looking at the language in regard to interior renovation. You know, we let somebody, we let somebody renovate the interior of a building that's non-conforming. You know, why not prevent them from doing that under that same logic, you know?
It becomes much easier, right, when they're building new or you rip down? But I think it's, it, the problem we're trying to work around is for somebody who wants to do, yeah, the small addition to one of these buildings that's non-conforming. And I hear what you're saying, yeah, you take the hard line view, say, well, you know, push that all the way up. Well, I think it's, it, it becomes really difficult for the, for the add-ons and the... So the idea was to let them continue at least what they've got.
I think logically it makes sense. Like, I, I don't necessarily think I'm arguing against that part. I was just thinking about, like, if we're prescribing it on one end, is, do we also do, you know, at least a lot of the flexibility on the other side of it as well?
Yeah, and I, I, I see where, where you get with that. But I think, I think I would rather go with the direction that we're going, and again, using the Dollar General as an example, that it took a property that was not, not being used really at all, and provided an opportunity for some beneficial use, whether that's the, the highest, best use in the eyes of some, some people. But I can, I would, I wouldn't want to be so restrictive that we prevent a property owner from making smaller changes that don't increase the non-conforming use, but allow that, that property to still be used productively? You know, it's, so again, using that same example, we don't let, we're not letting them become non-conforming on the side lot line. They're still, they're still conforming in regard to the side, side lot line. It's only that, continuing on that same plane.
Yeah, and that building specifically, had they done what they were supposed to do, it would've been worse to have it shut out, that addition.
Right, right, and I...
So thinking about other projects, it's like, does it, yeah.
Well, I'm maybe more referencing, not necessarily, because I, I would agree. I think that logic makes sense. I don't, I'm not disputing that part. I'm thinking like, if, instead of it being the maximum setback, if they're inside the minimum setback, right? And so in the event that they have the ability, in a similar situation, if the, the role, if this, it was flip-flopped, right? And that, that building were too close or inside of that setback, are we then saying, no, you have to, you can't do anything with that building?
Right. You can, but you have to be, you have to put the addition at the required setback.
I, or is that what we're saying?
Right, yeah. In other words, if, let's say it was...
Offset that back or build on the backside of it, or...
If the requirement was twenty-five feet and they were twenty feet off, the addition would have to be twenty-five feet off.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, the example that pops into my head, and I don't know, I, I don't think that my office building on South Shore Drive is non-conforming, but it's awfully close to the road. That if I wanted to expand, you know, the building toward my parking lot, which is well, well within the lot line from that direction, to say, oh, no, no, the only, the only addition you can put on has to be behind what the, the now current requirement is, could really potentially limit the ability to be able to do it. And I can imagine, and, and again, I think this is where Dollar General is a great example. There was no portion of the building that was within the appropriate envelope of that lot. And to say, well, okay, the only, the only addition you can put on there is one that, that is detached from the building itself, doesn't seem like that makes any sense. I can see where the, the reverse of that could be true. That at one point, a building was built very close to the, to the front of the lot, and now we've moved those setbacks back and to say, well, no, you can't do any addition whatsoever to that building. Well, you could, but it's gotta be disconnected from the current building. And it just doesn't seem like that makes, or, you know, connected by an inch or whatever. You know, whatever that, that ridiculous part, part would be.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I, I just felt like it was clarity.
But to use yours as an example, in other words, you can put an addition on, but it has to be the required setback off the road.
It, it would have, well, under what we're talking about here, if I, if, if in fact my building were too close to the road right now, if I were under these rules, putting an addition on, I could continue that same plane of the front of the building to the side under this. Dave's shaking his head, no, but I...
You just told us that if it's, if it's greater than the minimum, than the maximum, but not lesser than the minimum.
Yeah.
Right. That's why I wanna make sure you understand what we're doing.
That's, that was my question.
If we don't have minimum setback in there, so if you were too close, if you're required to be twenty and you were at ten, you wouldn't keep that same line.
Yeah.
I'd have to step back.
You would have to step back. Just like we don't have the maximum height in there. If somebody was taller than what was, they were permitted, they wouldn't be able to maintain that. They'd have to meet the, the required.
That's, that's another, that's another great example that I wanna, I wanna kind of talk through is, okay, so I've got a house where it's too tall right now. I wanna put an addition on the house that matches the same architectural style that's on the house, essentially, you know, it's just your, your basic, your basic house, continue that roof line. Right, no, you can't continue that roof line because you're at the, you're at the maximum height.
Right. That's why I was wondering if we don't, if we're shoehorning ourselves into one side, but not allowing for the other side.
I don't think I wanna do that. I think I, you, you've raised a really good point with this.
Let me, let me just...
Yeah, give me some examples to...
Sorry to interrupt. Let me stand corrected.
Okay.
We do have a provision in our ordinance already, along and within, that would allow you to do exactly what you were describing for the minimum setback. That's why we don't have minimum in there. To do the minimum, if you were too close, you'd be able to continue that same setback. So I apologize.
Because I'm not increasing the non-conformity. I'm not getting closer to the road.
You're not getting any closer, you're just maintaining that.
I'm keep, keeping that same thing, I, okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
Does that change the language at all, though? I mean, is it...
Well, that's just why we don't have the minimum in there, because we already have that covered.
Somewhere else.
Do we want, so here's then another question. Because as, every time we go through these, I'm, I'm respons, I'm reminded of what a beautiful document this is and how easy this document is to use. Is that something that we wanna make sure both of these things are in the same place?
Or reference it.
Maybe we, maybe we use the reference to the...
Yeah, some, you know, because if, if, if it, if it got past you in that thought, it's, how's the, how's the regular contractor or homeowner gonna be able to catch that and go, oh, I'm reading it here on the minimum, but I'm not on the maximum, or vice versa? Yeah, great point, though, Nate, thank you.
Yeah.
Let me just, Tricia gives me the nod, so that's a good sign. So, yeah, let's add, let's add that reference in there. Thank you.
No, and for, and for the public, I'm not planning on expanding my office building. And I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's non-conforming.
If you do, just pop the top.
Yeah, there you go.
That's true.
Keep rolling? Yes.
It is, it's a tricky building.
Storage facilities, since we were talking about those. The RMU district already permits the self-storage facility, so it just got left off of this list here of the zone districts where it's permitted. Building clear vision corner. So the idea here is to add this little paragraph in this, section nine is a little bit of our catch-all where we introduce, you know, maybe a topic, and then, and then we provide the regulations in a different section. So in chapter, in nine-oh-one, we're introducing the clear vision cor, the building clear vision corner, and then writing the regulations in nine-fifteen. If this looks familiar, we just, we just recently did that with the vehicle repair regulations that are right up above it. So what this building clear vision corner says, and really, this would apply in your NMU and the Form-Based Codes, for buildings that have a zero-to-three-foot setback, that the approving authority, you know, has to, they have to demonstrate to the approving authority that they have provided some sort of clear vision corner to the building. So if they're built right up next to the building, we saw that with the three-seventeen project where they have the little, the little column on the outside that you can kind of see through the corner. And so that could be one way of doing it. But we wanted to make sure that buildings that were built right up in the corner would still have some of that ability to see through the corner, if you will. And wanted to point out that that real, that wasn't just for vehicular traffic, but also for pedestrians, bicyclists on the sidewalk. So, and then you can see there's a reference at the end of three-seventeen that's just referring back to the corner treatment requirements in the Form-Based Code. So wanted to, you know, really be able to say that you might be able to satisfy both of those requirements. Use, building like three-seventeen Central, again, to be able to meet the corner treatment as well as the clear vision corner. So wanted to communicate that as well. Accessory structures allowed in the required setback. So there is a limit, at least in some zoning districts, of what the, how many accessory structures you can have. So we wanted to make it clear that there's some items that we wouldn't count towards that. So you can see, some of it's a little bit covered there, but, you know, decks, porches, stairs, patios, et cetera. Some of those things that we would say are accessory structures that we wouldn't count. When we talk about that limit, we're really talking about buildings. So wanted to make sure that was clear. That's the reference back to nine-oh-five is where you find those numbers, where those limitations are. And then really, just a clarification in that eve section, changing it to what we had before Udo. Building eves may project three feet out and be setback two feet from the property line. Talked a little bit about waivers. So in the Planning Commission approval process, we have some requirements or standards that you use for approving waivers. There are different standards in the Form-Based Code District, which is why we wanted to add a little clarification there at the end to make sure people knew which standards they were going to use. So if you're in the Form-Based Code section, you're gonna use those standards, not these general Planning Commission review standards for waivers. Site plan review process for special land use amendments. So if they were changing a building, coming in to make an amendment to their project that required a special land use, right now, it would either go through Planning Commission, which is that section twelve-oh-seven, or Admin Review twelve-oh-five. We wanted to add twelve-oh-four to that, which is the zoning administrator review. So if a project was small enough that it could, that would normally go through the zoning administrator review process, we wanted to be able to have that option as well. When you read that paragraph, you can see we're not changing the language, but a determination has to be made that it wouldn't change the nature of the use or the intensity. If it did, that would kick it up to the Planning Commission. So that review is already in there. And then you can see we are making some changes over on that left-hand side about that sort of determination process, in keeping with the, the sort of streamlined process that we have. Rather than have an applicant come to the Planning Commission to then find out... to then find out that they didn't have to come to the planning commission and only needed to go through admin review or the zoning administrative review process, we wanted to eliminate the planning commission part of that determination and allow staff to make that determination. And then the city attorney found some language in the fair housing accommodation section. So you can see there's just sort of, I guess what I would describe as clarification edits in here that, that they wanted to make on both the left-hand and the right-hand side, along with some formatting changes that occur along with those changes. That is Udo round seven.
Okay, any questions from commissioners?
We're asking for the recommendation to City Council to proceed with those changes along with the change that we talked about tonight.
Since we just did this one, do we want to start out with C, which would be the additional text amendments to Chapter thirty-nine? I would entertain a motion to-
We need, do we need to, we need to do public hearings on each of these?
That's right. I'm sorry. Do we want to, yeah, we want to do public hearing first. I was going to take an, take a motion first, but I will open the public hearing. Now, the question is, can we do all three of these because we have so much public here to talk to us? Can we do all three of these at once?
We did notice those separately.
Yes. Okay, fine. Sure.
I'd rather cross Ts and dot Is than-
Fine, okay. Let's start with A, public hearing, okay. Open a public hearing on text amendment for planned unit development. Let's see, anyone wish to speak to that issue? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
I move we approve.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We have unanimous voice vote. Okay, item B, open a public hearing for text amendments concerning unified development ordinance, accessory dwelling units. Seeing no one at the mic, I'm officially closing the public hearing. We'll accept the motion.
Move we approve. Support.
Okay, I have a motion, I have support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. I will open a public hearing. Oh, that's unanimous voice vote, in case it doesn't get recorded. Open a public hearing on additional text amendments to Chapter thirty-nine of Udo. Okay, nobody's coming to the mic, so I will officially close the public hearing on additions.
And, and then I would approve item C, but I do have a couple of comments to make before we vote.
Okay.
Support.
I, I want to thank staff again going through all, all of this in round seven. Some of these are pretty substantive changes, the planned unit development portion of it, the ADU portion of it. And for those members of the public who may be watching this meeting, who may not have watched previous meetings, we have had multiple discussions at the planning commission level about these issues before, so it's not something that we've done, you know, quickly. It's, it's something that we've talked through, discussed at multiple open meetings along this process. And both great tools that we're going to be able to use in the future as well as keeping this unified development ordinance, as I said earlier in the meeting, not only a beautiful document, but very user-friendly. And with any new big project, and this was a, a big project, always the opportunity for improvement. And I really want to commend staff for going through, continuing to go through this with a fine-tooth comb and continuing to be dedicated to the, the proposition that this can always get better and working to make sure that it always is. So thank everyone for that.
Okay, with those comments, any others? Otherwise, I believe we've had a motion and, and a second. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We have unanimous voice vote. Moving on, any communications from, any scheduled public hearings?
None.
Okay. Communication from commission members? Okay, staff?
Just maybe a reminder about the master plan. We are getting ready to do the kickoff, so, yeah, you might be getting some stuff in your email and seeing some stuff start flying around about the, the master plan kickoff here.
Okay, super, thank you. And I would entertain a motion to say bye.
Move we adjourn.
All in favor, say bye.
Bye.